To order.
Hey, I'm starting.
Okay, so this is a virtual meeting. We have a standard qualifier of behavior that our town administrator, Mark Walter, reads for us. Mark, please.
And there's a one correction you'll see of what was published, but I'll read it correctly. This is a web-based call, so we are operating under the following procedures. This session will be both video and audio recorded. Commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting, and will generally be keeping video off themselves on throughout the meeting. They will, actually, will be keeping the video on themselves throughout the meeting. There will be public comment during the public hearing. That's the correction. We had, there will not be public comment. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff or the chair. And just as one other qualifier, during the public hearing, there's multiple ways to make comments. You can, always you have to state your name or address, whether by typing or by voice. To make a comment, you can use the wave feature, and then you will be unmuted by the host. State your question and then your comment or comment. If you use the chat function at the bottom of the screen, please also type your name and your address and then state your question. If you call in via phone or by email, those comments could be distributed at a later date to the Five Pack Committee. And that address is publicinput@columbiact.org. All set, Ernie?
Thank you, Mark.
Ernie, before we begin, I had a quick question. During a regular public hearing, committee members have been able to ask questions, make comments very often. What I would suggest, if we do have a question, we get some input, that we ask your permission to do that. Does that work? Okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, as I started to say, the way we enact the budget or approve the budget this year is different because of what's going on in the environment. And I've asked Mr. Selectman Stephen Everett to speak up to that a little bit. Stephen?
So the questions have been asked of the governor and his executive order ability to make sure that we don't gather in a public forum. However, make sure the needs of the community are met. So the governor, an executive order seven Bravo. Seven Bravo does not thwart open meeting requirements, but rather establishes a temporary open meeting protocol to assure transparency and efforts to provide the public with information and opportunity to participate remotely. The objective of Executive Order 7 Bravo is to proceed in a manner as consistently as possible with the provisions of the local charter and applicable special acts, ordinances, resolution, and procedures. In addition, Executive Order 7I, or India, suspension of an in-person budget adoption requirement for municipalities. Section 13 of Executive Order 7I builds upon Executive Order 7 Bravo by suspending the in-person requirements for purposes of adopting the fiscal year 2020-2021 municipal budget and mill rate. Thus, in-person voting requirements such as annual town meetings, referenda, and special town meetings will be replaced in the current budget cycle by the Budget Making Authority. The Budget Making Authority shall be so authorized by the legislative body, unless the legislative body is a town meeting. In that case, as is in Columbia, the Board of Selectmen shall authorize the Budget Making Authority to adopt the budget and set the mill rate. And the Board of Selectmen have in fact done so.
Say that?
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we will try to educate the public a little bit about what's in this year's budget. And we'll do that as we usually do with presentations, beginning with the Board of Education Budget presented by Superintendent Maria Garik. Maria?
Great. I'm going to try to share a screen with all of you. Okay. Okay, does everyone see that? Is that working well?
I see it.
Okay, great.
Yes, I see it fine.
Perfect. Okay, so, good evening, everyone. And I'm pleased to present the Board of Education Proposed Budget for the 2020-2021 school year. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the Board of Education members for their commitment to the students of Columbia and for giving their time to improving the learning of those students. We also have to thank Porter Staff, Administration, and the Board of Ed for their efforts in collaboratively creating a budget to meet the needs of all children. And of course, we have to thank them for her technical support and all the support you provide for us throughout this whole process, Brett. Bev, I know it's like a ton of work, so thank you for everything. So to begin our budget process, we first consider known costs such as high school tuitions, transportation contracts, and contractual costs and benefits. We know that we have to factor in current student needs, including placements, services, interventions, and then areas that we've identified as needing improvement. In addition, we review our history of spending and any known revenues such as grants. Then our leadership team, the staff, and the Board of Ed work collaboratively together to create a budget that's tightly aligned to the goals that the Board has set for the schools and to those evidence-based strategies that we've put in place to make sure that we can have continuous improvement of Porter a priority. So our budget drives our goals. Then our leadership, I'm sorry about that. Then we have more unknowns clearly for next school year, given the unusual situation that we're all sitting in and living in and working in, and know that we don't have clear answers for the foreseeable future. Given these unusual circumstances and the understanding that community members in Columbia may experience financial challenges, the Board of Education and the leadership team made additional adjustments and reductions to our budget in efforts to minimize the impact on the community. Therefore, the proposal that we put forward to Five Pack was thoughtfully crafted. It's tightly aligned to our improvement plan and is fiscally responsible. So we do have four primary goal areas that make up our school or district continuous improvement plan. They're consistent with the vision and the goals that were set by the Board. And what is considered basically best practice in public education today. These four goal areas focus our work for a three- to five-year period, and they provide a way for us to really assess our progress and the impact on student learning. I'm going to just very briefly mention three of those goal areas. Our first goal area outlines strategies to ensure that we have a vehicle or an organizational structure for professional development that allows our staff to learn new instructional skills and new curriculums and to implement what they've learned. And then they receive feedback in an ongoing way by their colleagues and by coaches and by the administration. So we've spent a lot of work putting these structures in place for our staff. Our second goal area focuses our improvement efforts on the core of schooling, which is teaching and learning. We are focusing on improving and strengthening our instructional practices, and we've been introducing a number of new curriculums to ensure that we have horizontal and vertical alignment. We don't want to create gaps for specific students. We want to make sure that all students have access to a strong and rigorous curriculum. This includes not only academic curriculums and interventions, but also social, emotional, and behavioral curriculums and interventions. Our third goal is related to creating a positive learning environment and requires attention to overall school climate and classroom climate. We have to create a climate that is warm, welcoming, and orderly so that our students are able to learn and engage with their peers and with their teachers. So, we are, at this point, the Board of Education has proposed to put forward a request of $12,716,543, which is a 0.16% decrease from the 2019-20 appropriated budget. This slide also shows a historical view of the costs associated with Porter School, which is a pre-K through eight, and the costs associated with students who are in high school programs. As you'll notice, you'll see the percentage change of the appropriated budget for high school first and then for Porter. The next few slides will show you where some of those changes are that reflect those percentage changes. This is a historical kind of a snapshot of special education costs for students who have been identified as having a disability and they require, and who requires specialized instruction. These figures are based on actual student needs and are quite difficult to project because children's needs change over time. But what you will see is in terms of tuition, high school services, and transportation, over $200,000 reduction from last budget. Our primary drivers in our budget increases are health benefits, contractual obligations, and technology needs. I note around the technology increases, we did have a security assessment completed, which recommended a number of changes to ensure that our infrastructure is secure and that we have the tools and programming in place to ensure that. The decreases that you will note are seen in tuition lines, high school services, and special education transportation. Some of the equipment reductions, we will be able to purchase a few things from grant funds, primarily technology. And some of the curriculum materials and supplies are being purchased in this fiscal year. So you'll see some slight reductions there. In terms of our staffing profile, you'll see a historical picture as well of our certified staff and our non-certified staff. We have requested one teacher increase for grade four. This is given the student numbers and the needs. Each elementary grade will have three teachers per team, which is just the natural roll-up of cohorts of students. You will also note a .5 or half a position reduction for enrichment. And this model will be crafted to move Porter toward an adapted model, which is a school-wide approach to meeting the needs of all of their children. So this budget does maintain level services. And what I mean by that is it includes the same class sizes. So no changes there. It does maintain the level of curricular needs, instructional needs, interventions, and supports that have been in place. And if we are making, which we always make, programmatic changes year to year to improve what we're doing for our students, and that will be done within the current staffing profile. So we do not, at this point, anticipate any other staffing changes. The number of students, our projections, we had a a study completed in 2016 by Peter Prouda, and he made some projections based on the information he had at that time. And it was anticipated that our pre-K through eight population would be 387 students. Our current number is 411, so we are expecting that number to stay fairly stable for next year. Again, we have to wait a bit to see where our kindergarten and preschool numbers will fall, but I think we're going to stay pretty consistent, which is good news for us. And we also, for our high school students, he predicted 224 students. Our current number is 243, and we're anticipating 233 because we have a larger high school than a senior year class graduating than incoming ninth grade. This slide shows for you our current sections or classrooms. Again, pre-K and K, we're still estimating numbers based on history, so we're taking averages of what we could expect. And then you can see our actual classrooms and three classrooms per grade. Five and six and seven and eight are two teams of four teachers each. And in terms of our capital proposal was, again, the Board of Ed voted to reduce our requests, and we're going to complete a number of projects out of this fiscal year. And then some projects will be bid on hold. So our total request for this coming year is $30,000, which includes regular building maintenance and the start of a partial funding toward the start of a feasibility study around improving the track. So there, at this point, there are very, there are many unknowns as I don't need to say to everyone in this community that for school this coming year, given COVID and the situation we're sitting in, living within. So we're going to be working over the next three months to adjust how we do our work based on the guidance from the Department of Public Health, the Governor, and the Commissioner of Education. Lots of unknowns, but we will adapt and adjust to what the expectations are to meet the needs of our children, health and safety first. In closing, I just want to thank our staff and families and students for their flexibility during such a time of uncertainty. It's really been remarkable to see people come together, working together on behalf of children during such a challenging time. And I thank, you know, the town and all the town officials as well for the support that we've been receiving. So a big thank you to everyone. So that is it for me. I don't know if you want to, you're very welcome. I will.
We'll do questions later.
Okay, so I'm going to stop that.
Presentation of the Board of Selectmen and capital budgets by Town Administrator Mark Walter.
And Bev, do you have the ability to bring that up?
If you, if you struggle, Bev, I can try to do it. Just tell me if you want me to try to grab it. Here.
And Bev's on mute. I don't know.
Okay, Bev, I'm going to look through my emails too, so I'll be right back.
I was going to do it later, but while they're searching for that, I always like to give the Board of Ed Chairman the chance to say a few comments if he or she would like. Chris, would you like to say anything at this point?
Let me make sure we take him off of mute. If Bev could do that one while I grab this.
I might be able to too.
Yeah, because I think I can find your presentation here, Mark. Okay. Okay. Here, let me come back and help. Hold on.
I don't see.
Okay, I can do. All right, and I found the presentation too. So let me see, where is Chris? There he is.
Am I off mute?
Yes, you are. You're good to go, Chris.
Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to say a few words on behalf of the Board of Education. We'd like to thank and recognize Maria Garrick, her administrative staff, and certainly the teachers and staff for all the hard work given these extraordinary times. They've found a way to continue to educate our students in this year as well as to put forth a budget that we think is responsible and, as Maria had outlined, meets the needs of the district, maintaining our continuous improvement goals, professional development, instruction, curriculum, interventions, and our capital projects. So they've worked real hard. And again, we just ask that everyone, you know, look at what'll be put forth and hopefully everyone will support our budget. And thanks again, and appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you, Chris. Bev, I do have it if you want me to try to put it up on the screen. Mark's presentation. Do you want me to try to do that?
Why don't you give it a shot?
Okay, let me try that one then. All right. One sec. Screen share. And is that the right one? I think it is.
That was the previous one, but that'll work.
All right, sorry, I have a, I'm having a little technical stuff. Hold on.
This'll work.
So I'm happy to take another one if you want to send it to me, Bev. Otherwise, Mark, you tell me what to do.
The changes were minor. You want me to go ahead, Ernie?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so I want to thank the Board of Selectmen. We had Stephen Everett as our first selectman, Robert Hellstrom, our deputy first selectman, Lisa Napolitano, William O'Brien, and Judy Ortiz, and all supported by our finance director Beverly Cirillo and my executive assistant Jen Lavoy. Next screen. The story that the revenues tell, you'll see the big negative, 231,677 in intergovernmental. And then the other are slight increases in different line items to be a net effect of 199,302 that were down in revenues. But in the column below called notable changes in intergovernment revenues, you'll see that a big part of this negative, some of it's special education that Maria had just addressed. There's a $25,000 reduction in help towards special ed. But $195,000 is a net effect of the $234,946 that we will be using as revenue from our LOSEF reimbursement account. And we'll apply that for this year to pay for the cost of our salt shed that we built over the last couple of years. And this is a reimbursement grant. You'll notice that the positive portion, the $39,068, is what we normally get every year. So the revenue for 2021 will only be 39,000, and we're using 234,946. So it's a good thing, it's just it'll show up in our numbers as a loss of revenue. And next, please. All right, some of the key operating budget variables. One of the bigger ones was our health insurance. We took a very, I think it'll be a long-term positive driver towards flattening out our cost of healthcare by creating a healthcare consortium, we call it CTCHIP, which is a collaboration between Bolton, Brooklyn, Canterbury, Thompson, and Columbia. But unfortunately, we're not even a full year into it, and we had some pretty big claim experiences since July 1st of 2019. And that resulted in a 19.5% increase in our healthcare. We're hoping that that'll be not the norm, but will allow us to, over the long run, get away from these ups and downs in our healthcare because we have over, close to 600 members of this healthcare consortium. We also had some staff changes. The following departments, we had staff changes in. They were van services, public works, waste disposal, and recreation. And then in the budget, in the next slide, I'll give you a little more detail on that. And information technology. We did an IT assessment of both the Board of Ed and the town. The Board of Ed was first. And there, at the implementation stage, the town, we completed our analysis of all of our IT. They uncovered quite a bit of issues that could be construed as weaknesses and vulnerability. We've created an action plan to harden us against cybercrime and being hijacked, as many towns have, were one of their key targets. And as a result, there'd be some extra costs, mostly in hardening and training of our employees. Next slide, please. So as we look at notable increases and decreases in the operating budget, the van services had some additional costs because of our, we added a van driver and a dispatcher. Public works, we shifted some money from landscaping and moved it into an additional part-time staff. So that's really a change within budgets. We had a subcontractor landscaping budget item. So we shifted that over to an employee, part-time employee. Waste disposal, we had a third transfer station attendant added due to the complexity of the operation. It's getting much more difficult to educate and to keep up with the changing aspects of getting rid of our waste and our recyclables. If we don't stay on top of it with extra help in education towards our residents, the result will be fines when the improper, either recyclables or household waste or bulk is sent to Willamette Waste. And in recreation, we had another shift from one department. We shifted from our gate monitors over to our assistant rec director because we were able to relocate our rec department to the Murphy House so that we'll have more permanent staff on hand for doing some of the issues that we used to hire part-time staff for. So that was actually a net decrease. But you'll see, the group insurance went up 44,000. That was at 19.5%. The information technology went up 13,000. That was for training to avoid huge cybercrime that we have been hit, but we have not lost anything. We've been able to avert at least three or four attempts on our town so far. So things, knock on wood, are working. Social services, that was the, that number could change. That was for a social worker to be brought into the town. Most likely, I'll be coming back to the Board of Selectmen and Five Pack if we come up after going out to bid and analyzing some options. We might need a little more money there. But at the moment, we have a start to that of 16,000. Elderly services, that was the dispatcher and the transportation addition at 31,000. And then the public works really was an additional hours to an employee to help with the public works director as an assistant and the seasonal maintenance staff. And also, when you jump down to the waste disposal, you'll see the additional staff to help with the transfer station. Library services went up a little bit. Lake management, that increase was mainly to help do more monitoring for cyobacteria that could affect the lake. And we're trying to get ahead of it so we don't lose any use of the lake for swimming. And that shift in recreational salaries, I already addressed, was supplemented by a shift from gate monitoring. Next, please. The areas where we reduced the budget the most in light of COVID-19, and this was a constant progress since the budget started prior to COVID-19. And then midway, the Board of Selectmen made further cuts, which Five Pack approved. And really, road surfacing went up in net effect of 49,000. That's because we're attacking a very long, big road, Lake Road. Hennequin Road went down in the drainage project because that's fully funded now. The Hunt Road box culvert replacement right outside of the Monopon Dam, we reduced that further by extending that to a four-year process. So that went down 75,000 from the original 175 we requested. And other big areas, the rec park improvements finalized at $100,000 request instead of the original 235,000 we started with. And DPW Capital is down. And DPW Capital is down just because we made some shifts and spread out some of our purchases. Also, the building improvements are down because we swapped a few projects. A more immediate one this year, moved one to next year. And tree removal is up. We're trying to now standardize it 100,000 a year for tree removal till we get ahead of the ashbor beetle blight that we're in the middle of. And the senior center needed some additional safety modifications in the bathrooms for some automated doors. So seniors with some handicap challenges could still get in and out of the bathroom. And the fire department, we, that request is down by 150,000 because we're moving it into budgeting for the rescue truck this year. And we're, we've moving that through the process with the new executive order of requesting it to be, come from the general fund through Board of Selectmen and through Five Pack. So the net decrease in capital is 218,500. Next, please. So as a snapshot, you can see the Board of Selectmen has a 5.88% increase, an increase of 236,000. The Board of Ed has a decrease of 20,283. We are no longer budgeting for teacher retirement because we don't believe the state at this moment will ship that to the town. Debt is down 7,250. And capital combined between Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen is down 359,583. So the net effect to the budget, we're asking for an appropriation of 18,53,480, which is down 190,160, or down 1.0% from last year. Next, please. And finally, the Five Pack Board is, their goal was a zero mil rate increase. And they proposed to keep the mil rate at 29.33. And after all the reductions I've just described and some of the increases, the net effect to accomplish a zero mil rate increase is to use less than a mil from our general fund, 438,736, to remove any increase. So you can see the bottom graph, it's been very flat for the last four years. And the positive is that usually at the end of our budget years, we do give back money and we did realize some increased revenue, which I think Stephen Everett will address from the state, which is not reflected yet. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
At this point, we'll give First Selectmen Stephen Everett a chance to make a few comments if he'd like.
Thank you, Ernie. We went into this budget season always looking to continue the quality of life and provide the services necessary for the citizens of Columbia. And about midway through it, we got thrown a curveball with the COVID-19. Nobody knows how long it's going to take to come out of this and return to some sort of normalcy. But in saying that, we went back in and we redid our budget, took a hard look at some things and realized that sometime we will turn the corner. But we had to do this in a very financially responsible way. So we worked with all departments and were able to reduce in a lot of different areas, change plans in a lot of different areas and put forward to Five Pack suggestions and asked them to do their job. And I believe that what they're putting forward to the town is a good budget. It's doable economically for the town of Columbia. We currently enjoy a healthy general fund. Even borrowing year after year or taking from the general fund, after July 1st, when the bills get paid and all the calculations are done, we usually return some money back to the general fund from different areas. This year, areas such as overtime from DPW because of the light snow winter. We didn't use as much salt. There's money to turn back. There's different areas in the school system that they're looking at. There's no guarantees, but I do believe that after July 1st, when all the books are looked at and equaled out, I think our general fund will grow again. So I'm very confident in using the general fund to make sure we do not have a mil rate increase this year. A couple of weeks ago, I kind of got called out by a viewer when I did my video and I said there was something in the budget for everybody. And it sounded exactly how he said, boy, everybody's getting something. But what I meant was everybody in Columbia's life, their life here should be safe and enjoyable in a place where they want to live and grow their families and see their children return to and grow their families. So we continue to provide for quality of life in this budget. We pared down the rec park expansion, but we are still moving forward with different items. The emergency services always need to be a highest of priority. They're buying a new truck, going out for bid on the request of the fire department ahead of time because they need it. The one we have is not doing the job. They are out there all the time. They deserve the best equipment. And for our citizens, as we grow older as a community, we have needs. We have needs to be helped when our family is no longer here. We have needs for those who have given their lives to this town to make it what it is so they can get to the doctors, they can get to the grocery store, they can be taken care of when they have needs. So we've expanded and we are looking for social worker to be able to provide for our families. So that's what I mean by a little something for everybody. This year, the budget was very difficult. There were some tense times. But everybody involved, I'm proud of you for what you represent on your different boards. And I believe this is a budget that fits the needs of the town of Columbia and the people who reside here. So to all of you, Chairman Sharp, let's head forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Now it's time for input from citizens. Mark, I understand that you got at least one early question or comment.
Yes, I had, and First Selectman Everett has referenced it, John Vulgar, who lives on 6 Collins Road, wrote an article or a comment into budget publicinput@columbiact.org, which anyone can send in from now until we have our next Five Pack meeting. But it was, he stated, "As you move forward with unilateral budget tax plans, it's imperative that you consider the situation of those you serve. It will be unconscionable and flatly against everything this town, state, and nation stand for to raise taxes or fees without consent of the governed." The comment last week on First Selectmen's YouTube post that there's a little something for everyone causes pause. No doubt, the town of, the town and the Board of Employees who have experienced no financial hardship through any of this are all due for contractual salary increases. I suppose that cannot be controlled. Beyond that, any increases in town outlays any excuse not to roll current year surpluses from snow removal back into savings for next year budget is indefensible given the current ongoing financial hardship of a large share of the townspeople are facing. I will return, I will return to the most foundational American phrase that we share and hold dear, consent of the governed. It's our right and it's your responsibility, John Vulgar. And that's the only public input we received.
It sounds like those things that I feared it might happen were all addressed not in a negative way. Is that, Stephen, do you care to comment on that a little more?
No, that's exactly the email I was talking about. I think I addressed it and I talked with Mr. Vulgar, one-on-one, explained it and put in a phone call. And he sent me a follow-up understanding and, you know, was appreciative of what the boards were doing.
Thank you. Since I can't see the audience, I guess it's you, Bev, that would see anything coming into the chat room?
In the chat room, we have a couple. Where'd it go? Denise Egan, let's see, where'd she go?
Would you like me to read it, Bev?
I have it. Denise Egan says, "I have been asked by the library board to request that our recent decrease of 2,306 be reinstated due to COVID."
What? I'm sorry.
I'll read it again. She is, Denise Egan, I don't have her address, she didn't provide it, has asked that the recent decrease that was approved from the library of $2,306 be reinstated due to the increased cost that the library is having due to COVID.
Who is Denise Egan? Is she connected with the library?
I believe she's on the library board, might be the treasurer.
I think she's the treasurer, but let me see if.
She's on. Yes, because I thought we, this was reviewed with them and that we had consent from the library.
Yeah, Denise, you are, I unmuted you. Would you like to comment?
Sure. I'm the president of the library board. And we had put forth, when it looked like the town wasn't, was in need of getting an additional X dollars, trying to be a good team member, we said we could drop our request down from 3.07% to 2.5. Since then, two things have happened. One is, you know, our health cost increase, you know, I'm hearing for the first time this 19.5% increase in our budget. We put in 10% for our covered employees. And the second thing is that because of the COVID, and if you've been reading any of the literature and the guidance coming out, not so much from Connecticut, but from life, from different library associations throughout the country, there's quite a bit of additional hands-on materials that we're going to need to have to provide the library for PPE and the books and all of those things. So if we could get that 2,000, that $2,300 back that we had offered up, that would be great. And I've been asked by my board if I would present that.
Okay, thank you. We'll take it under consideration.
Okay, and the second, there's another chat. Mary Roykel. She said, "Will the Board of Ed budget adequately support a return to school normal in the fall of 2020? A return to school with a hybrid model of half-days or modification to protect children and our long-distance learning? Obvious question due to COVID-19 uncertain." Maria, would you like to respond to that?
Sure. Well, it's, clearly, it's really difficult to answer the question at this point because the reopening advisory committee is still in the midst of their work. And they're really checking what the Department of Public Health is saying that's best for children at this point. And I think over the next few months, we'll have a better picture of what the Board of Ed will need to address whatever scenario. Clearly, if we go back to school, as is, we will have what we need in place to meet the needs of our children. I think the issues related to the level of health concerns that might still be in place in the fall if we're going full back into school, which I think is still a real big question. There will be things like PPE that we will need. We may need other adaptive equipment. We will potentially need thermometers and other equipment to manage whatever the recommendations are from the state. However, a lot of that is unknown. We're purchasing a number of things that we can now through the funding we have from this appropriated budget. And if necessary, we would come to Five Pack to talk about the non-lapsing account. So there are funds in that account for unexpected circumstances. So if need be, that's where we would, we would come to Five Pack. But what we know at this moment, we feel really comfortable with the budget that we've presented. But more to come, clearly. We have, we'll be working hard over the, you know, daily updates from the state and lots of superintendent conversations. So more to come. Welcome.
Okay. Next, I have Carol Kabala. Let me unmute her. Hey, Carol?
Thank you, Bev. It's Carol Kabala, 37, Lake Road. And I'd like to say that I would also like to see the 2,000-plus dollars reinstated to the library's budget due to the COVID-19 concerns that they will have as they go forward in trying to reopen the library. I'm glad that Denise also mentioned that there would be increases to their insurance because that wasn't in her initial statement. And also that the library has concerns or has increases in minimum wage, just like the rest of the town. My next is just a comment. I find it hard to be negative about a zero increase that was reached this year on our budget. Much of this is due to postponed, a lot of it is due to postponed projects and also money that is taken from the general fund. So I'm going to keep that in mind throughout the year so that when we come to the budget process next year, I might have some comments on some of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sue Epstein would like to make a comment. Let me find her and unmute her. Okay, Sue?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sue Epstein, library director. I just also wanted to ask that the $2,306 be returned to our budget. It's, it is included in the amount that we originally requested. The amount that we originally requested was going to cover the mandatory salary increases and our known increases in vendor costs. So with this cut and now additional costs to reopen because of COVID, we are that much further behind. So I just wanted to add my two cents to say I would like that to be reconsidered. Thank you.
Okay. Bev?
The next one is Joan Hill. Could you expand on the necessity of the rec park improvements that will be completed under this year's budget request?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I think she wanted to know what we're going to do up there this year, Ernie. Mark, can you go through the list, a few items?
Yes. What we're doing is we're trying to complete the pavilion, the addition to the playscape to allow some more handicapped components. And we're completing the portion next to the basketball court for pickleball and the basketball. The basketball's already budgeted, but the pickleball. So those, those additions and changes would amount to $100,000.
I don't know if Joan's on the line. I think her question was.
Then I had, I don't, let me see if I can unmute her.
She also has a second question there.
Yeah, Joan had another question up to the Fire Department capital.
On requesting it out of the general fund.
No, and outside of meeting procedure.
Correct.
I didn't hear the question.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Could you expand on the Board of Selectmen's decision to fund the fire department capital item from the general fund outside of the town meeting procedure? And that is from Joan Hill, Twenty-three Cards Mill Road.
You want me to hear that, Stephen?
Sure, and I'll jump in if I have to.
Okay, the fire department did come to the Board of Selectmen and they're concerned with both mechanical, which is actually electrical, problems they're having with the rescue truck with it unbeknownst to them turning off. So they felt they needed to accelerate the two-year cycle that the truck is on and requested that we move the truck as soon as possible. They are planning to go out to bid and that'll probably take a little while, but they want to make sure the money was approved before they started seeking to complete the replacement of the truck. Is that good, Stephen? Ernie? I have another question that came over public input. It's from Randy, D-A-H-E-R, Dower. He did not give his address. Randy, maybe you could email back your address as well. That'd be helpful.
Upper Woodland Terrace.
Okay, thank you. So Randy asks, health insurance premiums are expected to increase to nineteen point five percent. What percentage did the employees contribute to the premiums in nineteen twenty? And is any of this nineteen point five increase being passed on to employees to help subsidize the increase for 2021? And the employees do pay a percentage of total cost of insurance. And I know the different bargaining units have different formulas towards the healthcare. Bev, do you want to add to that in any way?
No, that pretty much covers it. It depends on which group, the teachers and the non-sur teacher and the admins, they all have different, and the town has a different one. Plus, each group gets a contribution to their health savings account.
Yes, but
I assume the underlying question is that we raised the percentage of employee contribution.
On the town side, they did. The Board of Ed stayed the same because of contract.
And of the overall total cost, we all contribute to healthcare. If the healthcare goes up, we all pay more. Plus, the town did add to their a percentage towards their contribution.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. I don't have any, there's no, I don't have any more in public input.
How about you, Bev?
It looks like we took care of all the chats from what I could see, and I don't see anybody else's hand up, so. Do you see any, Maria?
Well, this is for the public. If there's no more public comment, then we close the hearing at this point. So I'll give you about thirty more seconds. But I would remind the public that you can still correspond through the email account that Mark referenced earlier. And anything that comes in, we, Five Pack will have a meeting next week for a final vote, but we will consider any input that comes in over the next week.
One more comment.
Yep, there's one more. It just came through from Mary Reichel. Thank you to Five Pack and town officials.
You're welcome.
Keep an eye on them birds, Mary. Don't let anybody hurt our eagles.
Okay, Dick, you said you might have a question. Please make it simple for me.
No, I just wanted to get the process down a little bit. I did, I liked the rationale for increasing the library budget by twenty-three hundred dollars. So I would, I don't know whether we do that today or wait for next week.
Next week.
Next week, so. So, I mean, my quick reaction to that is it makes sense that we do increase. That's not a lot of money and we can take it from the unbalance. That's all.
Yeah, again, that was not a cut. We were given the information that it was a voluntary cooperative reduction. So I don't know if anybody on Five Pack has a negative reaction to that. But again, that's one of the things that we'll discuss next week. And at next week's meeting, because of how awkward this is, we will not have a lot, well, we probably shouldn't have any public input. So I would encourage everybody, if you have concerns, get those to us early and whatever we see, we will definitely address at the meeting. But there will be no new comments except during the course of that meeting. And if there are no further public comments, I declare this hearing closed. Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Have a good night, everybody. See you next week.
Okay. Good night.
Night.
Good night.